All right, if everybody would join me for the pledge before we open the first public meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to call to order the first of where it's going to be five separate public hearings this evening. The first public hearing scheduled for 6:00 PM is on the, to consider public input for the repeal and revisions to Chapter 71. Again, as I indicated, the purpose of this public hearing is to receive input from the public regarding this proposed ordinance. There are copies of the proposed ordinance that we're going to discuss. Each of them are available up here in front of the dais on the table. If you'd like one, please come up and grab one at your convenience. This meeting meets the accessibility requirements for the disabled. If anybody needs special accommodations or knows of anybody that is present here at Town Hall this evening that does need accommodations, please bring it to my attention. So without further ado, I'm going to open up the floor to anybody, any members of the public who wish to comment again on Chapter 71. Are there any members of council who wish to? I know we've discussed it ad nauseam, but if there's any members of council who wish to add anything, certainly could have thought of something between our last meeting and this meeting.
The chairman would be happy to.
Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll just say for the record, for those present here tonight who may have heard this in earlier meetings, the purpose of the proposed repeal and revisions to Chapter 71 is essentially a housekeeping change. That chapter currently refers to the Health District, which the town was formerly part of with the Town of Trumbull. And this change effectively updates that ordinance so that it refers to the Monroe Health Department and vests the authority as, consistent with state statute, vests that authority with the Town of Monroe and Monroe's health director and our relatively newly seated Board of Health. Not so new at this point, but in the grand scheme of things, relatively newly seated Board of Health. And I certainly would strongly advocate in favor for this ordinance change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. And again, just wanted to describe, while I had the opportunity, it didn't seem like there was a lot of interested individuals just yet, so maybe I can pry you out of your seats with some interest. But to describe the process, essentially, this ordinance, I want to thank Mr. Kellogg for spearheading this project, working with the Board of Health to identify at least the preliminary ordinances that were necessary in order to get that department up and running properly. The ordinance was drafted with the full consent discussion and consensus of our new Board of Health. It was then presented to Town Council, Town Council, specifically Town Council Subcommittee on Legislative and Administrative Matters, which is comprised of three members of council, myself, Ms. Lepelis, and Ms. Martin to my left. It's a bipartisan subcommittee that is charged with reviewing a number of things, but most importantly, ordinances that will be presented ultimately to the full body of council. It was reviewed by our subcommittee on two occasions. It was discussed, this particular ordinance, I do believe there were very minor changes made to it, essentially, as Mr. Kellogg pointed out, housekeeping changes. It then went back to the Board of Health for their overall consensus, which was provided. And then it was presented back to the full body of council last meeting, two weeks ago, whereby there was essentially a consensus to move this forward, to schedule this public hearing for this evening. It was published as is required by our charter and our rules of procedure in the Monroe Courier, at least five days prior to today, so the last edition of the Monroe Courier was published. And here we are this evening, which, another requirement of our charter before we adopt ordinances, is to offer a public hearing on each of the ordinances prior to Town Council's full consideration of that ordinance. Presumably, if there was a number of comments from the public, in the past, there has been comments from the public that were intriguing to council and certainly brought certain aspects to our attention that we necessarily didn't think of, which would require us to potentially reconsider their drafting and the wording of that ordinance. And if that had happened, if that does happen this evening on any of these ordinances, it would go back through that same process I described again until such time as we felt that it was appropriate for full adoption or had enough votes for adoption. So if we don't receive any input on this particular ordinance, you'll see, or maybe you won't see, but on our agenda this evening, all of these ordinances will be discussed again for what we hope to be a final time and voted upon. Once they are voted upon, if they are voted favorably and adopted by council this evening, they would be submitted to the first selectman for his approval or veto of the ordinance. If the ordinance is approved by the selectman, it would then be published in the Monroe Courier again, and 30 days from that publication, we filed in the town clerk's office, published in the Courier, and 30 days from publication would be considered adopted and law. If the selectman used his authorized power to veto the ordinance, it would come back to council. Council can then overturn the veto and approve it, notwithstanding the selectman's decision with a two-thirds vote. And after that two-thirds vote, it would then be published with the town clerk, published in the Monroe Courier, and become effective law 30 days thereafter. So that's the process. I hope I don't have to repeat that again in the next five hearings. We can have one of our scouts out there, if we see someone new walk in, we'll charge you with repeating everything I just said. Perfect. There's a new gentleman right there. Mr. Porter, we're going to have one of the scouts describe the ordinance process to you. All right. All right, so with all of that said, is there any further comment from the public? Anybody who wants to comment on this ordinance? Any members of council who wish to say anything further?
None missed.
All right. I'm going to ask one more time, any members of the public who wish to comment at all on this ordinance? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed at 6:11. Four minutes before our next.
Before our next.
Our next. While we have an opportunity, Mr. Kellogg, I know that we are in the presence of a number of Boy Scouts from a local troop that you're familiar with, so if you'd like to say a few words and just introduce them to the full body.
Sure. Thank you, I'd be happy to. I wanted, I'd love to, first of all, thank the scouts that are here tonight, working on a merit badge. And I will introduce their scoutmaster, Mr. Ed Graetricks, who is there from Troop 63. I know he'll also be joining us a little bit later for the official ceremonies, but a subset of his troop, believe it or not, this is a subset, is a very large troop, which I am familiar with, my son is part of the troop as well. And, you know, they're here tonight, working on a badge. Thank you for coming, welcome. And certainly, if any scouts or anything, want to ask any questions before our next public hearing, which is in a couple minutes, we'll have time now, or we'll probably be timed throughout the evening, because each, each public hearing is scheduled for 15 minutes. I don't anticipate that every single one will go to full 15 minutes, so there'll be, there'll be time, if not now, later. So, if there's anything you'd like to say, we have a minute before.
There's a requirement for some of our very young scouts, and that is to talk about the individual rights of citizens. That would be, most of them are sitting, a few of them are sitting at my right, my left and right here. The younger ones actually have that requirement, besides, they're going to be mostly listening and writing, and hopefully, if all goes well, hearing two sides of a subject and recording that and being able to rerepresent that to a merit badge councilor. So, they're mostly in listening mode, with one exception, as the very young ones have a requirement to actually engage in citizenship about what the rights of individuals are. So, if we get a bigger break, I might drag them down there.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, it's now 6:15 PM, and I'm going to call to order the second public hearing on the revisions to Chapter 397 entitled Peddlers and Transient Sellers. Again, the purpose of this public hearing is to receive input from the public regarding this proposed ordinance. And again, it's our intention that this meeting meet the accessibility requirements for the disabled, so if anybody requires any special assistance or knows of anybody that does require assistance and wishes to attend the meeting, please bring it to our attention. As we did before, we went through the process, I won't belabor that issue again, but this is also a, an ordinance that was spearheaded by Mr. Kellogg, so I will turn the floor over to Mr. Kellogg just to explain the highlights and the intentions of this ordinance. Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I've reported to this council before, and for the benefit of those who are attends tonight, who may not have heard this prior, it is, it came to my attention several weeks ago that we had businesses in town that were looking to engage the services of food trucks within our community, so that those businesses could benefit from their mutual customers by being able to offer that in a controlled fashion on their premises. However, there was some obstacles that were perceived to be in the way, one of which is the current Chapter 397 Peddlers and Transient Sellers, that there's certainly an interpretation that would include a food truck in those definitions. And Chapter 397 currently prohibits any vehicle that's engaged in those, in what they define as peddler or transient seller, from being at any fixed location for more than 10 minutes per 24-hour period. So thereby, it effectively restricts that business in its entirety. The revision as proposed adds an exception to both definitions to exclude what are called itinerant food vendors in the State Public Health Code. So itinerant food vendors that would be properly licensed by the Director of Health, and that also have the permission of either the private property owner, or if it were town property, the first selectman, would be excluded from the definition, and therefore, this chapter would not apply to that properly licensed itinerant food vendor. So that's the intent of this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. And again, just for the record, this ordinance was reviewed by our LNA Subcommittee on two occasions. There was significant discussion regarding the ordinance. We did receive, did seek input from the Chief of Police, who did promptly respond to the request and did give us a number of very helpful suggestions. All of his suggestions and the suggestions that we did receive from other members of the public were discussed and considered in detail in LNA. It was, this ordinance was presented back to the full body of Town Council at our last meeting two weeks ago. It was, there was a consensus to move it forward for a public hearing in its current form. The public hearing was called for for this evening at 6:15, and notification of the public hearing was published prior to this evening in the Monroe Courier.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to add that because this, the intent of this exception puts the regulatory oversight with the Health Department, this change was also presented to the Board of Health and was also recommended for, by them for approval as well.
Great. So with that, is there any members of the public who wish to comment or provide input regarding this particular ordinance? Yes, ma'am? One at a time, if you'd come forward. You can start with you, sir, I guess, it's easier to get out. Come forward to the microphone, name and address for the record.
They're together. They all are gracious, they're going to do it once.
Thank you, Steve.
Hi, my name is Mark Samotolsky. My wife and I, Tess, over there, we own Voracious Brewing Company, Multus Express, in Monroe. There's about 30 breweries in Connecticut right now, and a big part of each brewery is the fact that there are a lot of food trucks in their towns. Two Roads has it in Stratford, and pretty much every other brewery in Connecticut that I know of does. And we were hoping it would be a good addition to our business, to be able to provide the patrons with food they could walk out and get, but it'd also be good for local businesses who have food trucks, like Vossi's up the street, and Mark, um, Mark Anthony's, Tess?
Carl Anthony's.
Carl Anthony's. We've had, we've seen their trucks before, and they're at the farmer's market as well. So we were hoping it would be a good addition for our business, and we do draw a lot of people, you know, from out of town, but it'd be good for local people as well.
Great. Thank you very much.
Having worked with teenagers for 40 some odd years, I assume if you're selling beer, that somebody would be carding them?
Oh, we sell beer inside the brewery.
Okay.
And we card people. We do allow anybody in the brewery, so people that travel distance can take their children in. We actually have games for children.
But if it was a teenage person?
Oh, you've got, you've got to be 21, and all our people have taken TIPS classes, and we understand.
Perfect, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I know it's not common to have a question and answer session, but since Ms. Lepelis started, everybody might as well finish it, right? All right, well, thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you for thinking about having food trucks.
Ma'am? Sure. Again, just keeping with protocol, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Tess Samotolsky, 117 Horse Tavern Road, Trumbull, Connecticut. And I'm a co-owner of Voracious Brewing Company, along with my husband, Mark, and we really think it's an important part of the whole, or of our brewery, to be able to have food trucks, because people follow food trucks, and it's not like we could be making any money off of the food trucks, it's just another added bonus for the people that come there. So it's, it's just very important, and in three days, I have all these signatures for people that have come to our brewery that want to have food trucks. And there's so many different kinds of food trucks, they would only be on our property, on, or actually, Mr. Sippin's property, on Saturdays, one or two food trucks, and there are so many food trucks around, there's, you know, baked potato food trucks, and there's meatball food trucks, and Mexican food trucks. But if we did pass this, we would start locally and go with the food trucks in Monroe, Trumbull, and Newtown, just to, just bring a local flavor into our brewery. So, I just think every other brewery in Connecticut has it. Two Roads has three food trucks there on Saturdays, one to two there on every day that they're open. So I think it's, it's a big community of food trucks, and food and beer go great together, and we just would like to see that for Monroe. I mean, at the farm market, the pizza oven food truck is, is the biggest draw, I mean, people go there and they get their Friday pizza from there, and they're there every Friday. So if they can do that, and at our open house, we had a food truck from Vossi's come down. Again, it was a one-time thing, but I guess if it's one time, it's okay in Monroe, but if it's more than one time, it's illegal. So we would really like to change that, and we really would hope you would help us, so who can I give these to?
You can certainly hand that up, we'd be happy to take it.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tess.
Just pass this down, who wants to see it? Sure. Name and address, sir, please.
Ed Graetricks, 194 Barn Hill Road, in Monroe. I had the opportunity this afternoon to give this a little read over, and a few of the dads that came in to join our group here had mentioned about the food trucks, specifically the ice cream trucks, I want to make it connect, of their license and they need to go through that. At soccer games, you have a 10-minute limitation, so they actually have a, they have to leave and come back. Is the, maybe that should be extended a little bit longer, because there is a hazard of moving vehicles with dozens or hundreds of people going to their cars. They time it impeccably to actually arrive when a game finishes, I don't know how that is, but that 10, and they do leave and rotate around, that maybe perhaps, if we're going to have a permanent installation, if somebody gets that, that kind of, a little bit longer, I'd rather not see vehicles moving when, when our children are transiting back to their cars.
Thank you very much.
Brian Mattingly, 265 Barn Hill Road, just want to come in and voice my support for Mr. Kellogg's proposal. It's a great idea, I've been to Voracious many times, it would be nice to have a food truck there at that while visiting the establishment.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to comment? Sir?
Jay Breski, 52 Stanley Road. I'm been a volunteer and friend and family of the Voracious Brewing family, and really see a lot of people coming in. One of the questions that people are always asking is, where are they going to get food? Are they going to bring it from outside? They like the artistry of, of the craft beer, this isn't, you know, this isn't just going, people going to get drunk, there's people who are sitting and evolving in a food culture, and so, giving the opportunity, not just for us, but for our town, to develop the culinary arts and some of the things that are really happening in that culture. Act locally, but think globally, I mean, it's really a, you look at the Food Network, you look online, there's a lot of food truck following, and this is a way that we can get in on something that's really coming up in the world and encourage some of the local talent to be presented.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this ordinance? Two things, especially for our young folks, that I wanted to bring up in response to some of the comments, is to show you some of the thought that goes into these revisions or some of the issues that are considered. With respect to the comment that was made regarding the ice cream truck, it was specifically our intention to keep ice cream vendors, most likely, we'll see, we'll see how this is further revised, but most likely within the purview of being defined as a peddler or a transient seller, because if peddler, if you're a peddler or a transient seller, by definition of this ordinance, there is a process by which the police department has to issue approvals, and because of that, and the interaction, the direct interaction with children, it was thought that that was a more appropriate process than to require the same level of scrutiny with food truck owners, because to our knowledge, individual business owners don't go through police background checks in order to open a restaurant in town. So that was one of the discrepancies, that was negotiated, it was discussed, you know, it was certainly important to all of us, we all commented on it and had an opportunity to think about that issue, and hopefully, we, we thought about it thoroughly enough. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that it is something that was, that did come up, and it was a suggestion by the Chief of Police in that regard.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just to further elaborate on that, part of the discussion we have is that, given the itinerant food vendors are already regulated by the State Public Health Code, and we'll be endeavoring to update our local food code as well, once in the near future, that's one thing we also discussed, is the ability to further address any specific restrictions such as this, that might be an unusual circumstance that we want further scrutiny and further review process, so we can deliberate that at greater length when the, the food ordinances get, get looked at for further review. However, this, this change would allow for us to, you know, offer the greater flexibility that I think our constituents are looking for, but I just want to make sure everyone realizes that the door is not closed on properly vetting a food vendor through the existing regulation which exists through the Health Department.
Right. And Mr. Kellogg makes a good point, that the state does, the state of Connecticut Public Health Code does already govern itinerant food vendors, which are otherwise known as food trucks. The other thing I want to point out to our business owners that did speak is something else that was considered was, what maybe, it's not known to me, I don't think it was known to any other members of the Town Council, that certain food vendors are trying to obtain tax benefits by registering their vehicles out, outside of the state of Connecticut. And so it was considered, or was presented to us that we think about somehow restricting vendor, only those vendors who maybe had their vehicles registered in the state of Connecticut to be permitted. We thought that might be unduly burdensome upon the Town of Monroe and officials, and didn't look into that further, but I thought it was worth mentioning to some of, again, some of the, some of the scrutiny that was put into this, and certainly, the business owners are probably free to do what they wish, but maybe something to look out for. I know you did indicate, and I wouldn't have mentioned if you'd indicated that, you were looking to give preference to our, our local vendors, maybe something you want to look into. But, is there any other public comment? Any members of council? Last call. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close this public hearing at 6:31 PM. Which puts us one minute behind schedule for our next public hearing, so we're going to rise again as per the notice of Mr. Vavrik.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This'll be a full week of Pledge of Allegiances for, for school, right? All right, so the time is 6:32 PM. And my call to order the next public hearing regarding our salon ordinance. Again, the purpose, it's newly proposed Chapter 425. For those of you who may have just arrived, there's copies of the ordinances up front. The purpose of this information session is to receive input from the public regarding this ordinance, and again, it's our intention that this meeting meet the accessibility requirements for the disabled, so if anybody requires assistance, or if you know anybody that does require assistance, who would like to attend this meeting, please bring it to our attention. Again, the theme for the evening, but I want to thank Mr. Kellogg and our Board of Health for getting this ordinance off the ground, so without further ado, I'll have Mr. Kellogg introduce this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this proposed new ordinance, Chapter 425, again, is, deals with salons. Salons are defined in this ordinance as any, any establishment practicing barbering, hairdressing, cosmetology, tanning, or the services of a nail technician, or any combination thereof. It's important to note that salons are currently regulated in the Town of Monroe, they have been for many, many years, the former Health District had similar regulations. However, in the transition from the Health District to our own municipal Health Department, we identified a need to establish our own salon, local ordinance as well, which is common in, in most municipalities, or I should say, many municipalities. The, the State Public Health Code does address salons, but they are not as specific as they might be in other areas, so you will find this ordinance not only has general provisions, but some very specific technical standards as well. there's copies of the ordinances up front. The purpose of this information session is to receive input from the public regarding this ordinance. And again, it's our intention that this meeting meet the accessibility requirements for the disabled. So if anybody requires assistance, or if you know anybody that does require assistance who would like to attend this meeting, please bring it to our attention. Again, the theme for the evening, but I want to thank Mr. Kellogg and our Board of Health for getting this ordinance off the ground. So without further ado, I'll have Mr. Kellogg introduce this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this proposed new ordinance, Chapter 425, again, is, deals with salons. Salons are defined in this ordinance as any establishment practicing barbering, hairdressing, cosmetology, tanning, or the services of a nail technician, or any combination thereof. It's important to note that salons are currently regulated in the town of Monroe. They have been for many, many years. The former health district had similar regulations. However, in the transition from the health district to our own municipal health department, we identified a need to establish our own salon, local ordinance as well, which is common in most municipalities, or I should say, many municipalities. The state public health code does address salons, but they are not as specific as they might be in other areas. So you will find this ordinance not only has general provisions, but some very specific technical standards as well. Again, I wanted to thank the Board of Health and our new health director, Ms. Rowl, for endeavoring to create an ordinance that not only, you know, its intent is to protect the public as is appropriate, however, doing so in a way that is least burdensome or restrictive on our business owners. So I think everything in this ordinance is things that our current salon businesses are familiar with. In some cases, they might see some minor changes, but I don't think they would be an issue to them because they are very similar to what they're dealing with currently, if not more business friendly. So with that, I will turn it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Again, for the record, this ordinance, again, with the assistance of the Board of Health and Mr. Kellogg, was reviewed by LNA on two occasions. There were some minor revisions made. It was presented to the full body of town council for consideration pursuant to a consensus. It was... I called for a public hearing this evening. And again, notice of the public hearing was published in the Monroe Courier prior, at least five days prior to this evening in accordance with our charter. So with that said, are there any members of the public present who wish to provide comment on this ordinance? Sir?
I guess you never give me pieces of paper.
I guess got a question where this one comes from. Section M is workstation. There's a reference past date to March 2009, and it's asking for some dimensional requirements from, I get chair to chair, aisle to aisle and the like. Is, would that, would that impact any of our current salons today? So are there some that are going to have a burden, a financial burden more so than others in the enactment of this? Or does everyone kind of fit there and we fit this? I'm sure this homework is done.
Mr. Keller?
I'd be happy to address that. Yeah, you'll see several technical standards that reference a specific date. The intent was that when the former health district created their regulations, they grandfathered certain businesses who had existing, who had been in business for an extended period of time, so that they would not have to do expensive, very, you know, extremely costly renovations to meet basically a new technical standard. The intent was so that instead of them having to do that immediately, through the process of the normal inspection regulatory process that local health does, they can identify specific areas and slowly bring them up to code. In other words, slowly say, okay, this is something that's really impacting you now. We need you to start moving forward.
This is a carryover date from the previous legislation only. It's not a big surprise to anybody.
And what we also wanted to... What we also were looking to do is maintain that grandfathering in there. If the business were to change owners, they would have to, as they would before, they would have to evaluate and bring it up to the technical standards.
I just happened to see that date.
Good question.
Thank you for your, thank you for your interaction. Any further comment from the public? Any further comment from council? All right, last call for the public. All right, seeing no further comment, I'm going to close this public hearing at 6:37 PM. Eight minutes ahead of schedule. Are there any questions from any of our guests this evening?
So let me ask you guys, what are the... to be able to run for the town of Monroe, what are the requirements to be elected to office? Age and the like? There's no age?
No.
I'm going to defer to our senior-most members, not by age, but by length of service, to answer any of these questions.
I've served on the council. I think this is my 14th or 15th year. You have to be home when the phone call comes, and you have to be slightly crazy, but not too crazy.
So these guys before me have the possibility of being elected to public office?
Thank God.
You have to go... the way it works is you have to go through a party or be unaffiliated. But basically, a party nominates you and asks you to run, and we run without a title. In other words, a vice chair, chair. You don't have a title. So it's a... we're looking for, we start out with six Republicans and six Democrats who run, and it's nine people on the council. And you have to have at least three of the minority party, whatever that happens to be that.
Excellent. And let me ask, Mr. Vavrick, you were up here. You're a non-voting member of the council. Is that correct?
Right.
You were separately elected, and this is the legislative kind of branch, and you would say you were the executive?
I'm actually ex officio of every board and commission.
Ex officio, what does that mean for you?
Means if there's ever a tie vote or any type of expertise that I would be able to step in and speak about most of it, yeah. But mainly for tie votes. They have enough expertise going around. I see Nick Kabor laughing because...
I can bring my own, too.
Yeah.
Excellent. And at this next election, you, there's a few members up here that are, that have been elected to an office. Is that correct? Is it, Mr. Somebody's elected to another office. Is that right?
This one had...
Ms. Heim, Ms. Heim is our town treasurer.
Not yet.
Seven thirty.
So you take over your office on the moment of swearing in. You're currently serving here.
Swearing in. We had the hearings, you know, tonight, so the only hearing, so technically I'm still on the town council until the swearing in at seven thirty, which is the technical table.
So you don't get to vote on all of this?
I can't vote on what's going in, no. I'm just sitting here. Do they vote on it after?
That's an excellent example of dedication to your position. Ms. Heim knows she's outgoing, and she wanted to fulfill her duties as a member of town council until the very end. So she wanted to attend the hearings this evening. She had no obligation to do so essentially, but not being able to vote on it.
And Mrs. Martin just said you could be any age, but you have to be a resident of Monroe.
Any age, but you have to be a resident. And while we got probably another minute, Mr. Leder, you have a title of chairman, is that right?
That's correct.
How'd you get that?
The chairman is elected by my fellow members of town council. We actually will have a vote this evening because I, my term as chairman officially will expire this evening. We will go through a process where we elect a chairman pro temp, which would be a temporary chairman for purposes of essentially calling the meeting to order and calling for a vote for the new chairman for the new two-year term and vice chairman. So we'll be doing that this evening. It's always an exciting, exciting moment for the members of council. We also, all of us serve, you heard me mention that each, a subcommittee called LNA or Legislative Administrative Matters. So each member of council serves on a subcommittee, at least one subcommittee. So there are three standing subcommittees. Each of us will serve on one of those subcommittees. They each have an independent chairman as well, and those committees are used for essentially bipartisan, call it vetting of certain issues. So as I mentioned, all of the ordinances were discussed at length in the subcommittee. And the purpose of that is so that when it comes before the full council, the presumption is a lot of the divisive issues, a lot of the questions, the obvious questions will have been asked, discussed, and we'll have a much cleaner version of the proposal presented to council.
You have a pre.
Correct, correct. So all the...
You can have a meeting.
Almost every project that's before us is, it's much more informal process, bless you, much more informal process. There's three of us, and we're able to invite a lot more discussion to those meetings. So we also will be appointing those committees this evening as well. A lot of exciting stuff this evening.
So one more thing, I know we got about one more minute.
Yep.
The town council, all of you are volunteer. You're not compensated at all.
That's correct.
You all have full-time jobs in all these committees. And the committee meetings, and to truly represent takes a lot of presence.
That's the number one question that I get all the time is, wow, you do a lot. How much do you make? How much do you get paid for that? And the answer is nothing.
I thought you were a volunteer fire chief.
It's fulfilling. Any other questions?
Two more minutes. Yes.
Mind if I ask what the organization of our local government is from the most important to the least important, and whether they are elected or appointed?
I think it depends on who you ask, that question. I think we would all agree that we are the most important elected body in the town of Monroe. But I think you might get some pushback from the gentleman sitting to my right over here, Mr. Vavrick, who's the first selectman. Do you want to be more specific with the question? I mean, we have...
Like top offices.
Okay, so the top office in Monroe is, for the local level, is Mr. Vavrick. He's the first selectman. But we also have a state representative that represents all of Monroe and a part of Newtown, represent our interest in the Hartford. And then there's also a state senator. So we have a representative and a senator, two different bodies, two different houses in the, in Hartford. And then we have a legislative body in the town, so we are responsible for essentially what you're listening to tonight, making the rules and regulations regarding the town. We also have quickly, there's a board of finance. They're charged with, they're like the trustee of the money for the town, and they're overseeing, they have a gatekeeper with, Ms. Heim will be that position, the treasurer, so make sure that she's the last thing to run the checks. And you have planning and zoning that takes care of the planning, the town building, and the zoning regulations in town. So can you put certain business up, like everybody's heard of the Walmart issue that we had recently, right? So that's a more of a planning and zoning issue. Those are, that's kind of the breakup of government. We also have our town attorney here this evening, sitting in the front row.
We have a board of ed.
We have the board of ed also. Let's not forget the board of ed, but their exclusively education has nothing to do with the town side of things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's also numerous boards and commissions that...
That's correct.
That also get involved in much more specific, like there's, there are commissions for the Parks and Rec Department, the Health Department, as we talked earlier, Police Department has a, there's a Police Commission, there's a Youth Commission, there's a variety of which that work to, and the town council typically have a larger, a considerable liaison as well to those bodies, so that the work of those committees and kind of the oversight of those departments is also kind of brought through the town in that fashion as well. So it's a very collab, lots of checks and balances, a lot of collaboration between those positions, the first selectman who's really, at the end of the day, in charge of the daily applications to town, but he has a lot of folks from various elected and appointed boards, again, mostly volunteer that assist in that regard.
And if you're almost eighteen, I don't know how old you are exactly, but you're a little older than the people on the right-hand side. The Youth Commission is always looking for representation from eighteen-year-olds, because, you know, you would be the closest to being able to talk about youth in Monroe.
All right, 6:46. You'd all stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, it's 6:47 PM. I'm going to call to order the public hearing scheduled for 6:45 on the OPEB trust ordinance. Again, the intention of, the purpose of this public hearing is to receive input from the public regarding this proposed ordinance. And this meeting is intended to meet the accessibility requirements for the disabled. So if anyone requires any assistance or knows of anybody that requires assistance and wishes to attend this meeting, please bring it to our attention. This ordinance is more aligned with what we would see on TV for some of the more boring legislative conduct that happens in Washington or Hartford, but nonetheless, just as important as the other ordinances. This ordinance was brought to our attention by our finance department. And what it is, is state statute requires, pursuant to, state statute in reading with our charter, it's required that an ordinance be established to set up any benefits trust that is established by the town. So this ordinance is establishing a post-employment benefits trust, which is essentially a monetary fund that is going to hold and govern certain benefits for employees, retirees, their spouses, and dependents of the town of Monroe. It's going to be managed by a board. It's going to have five members. Those members will include the first selectman, the chairman of town council, the chairman of the board of finance, the chairman of the Police Commission, and the director of finance. So your question was perfect just before this. We got a little history lesson. And that's basically, that's basically it. This ordinance, for the record, was also reviewed by the LNA Subcommittee on two separate occasions. It was drafted by a special-appointed town attorney to the town of Monroe that was employed by, at the direction of the first selectman, to be sure that it's comports, the ordinance comports to the statutory requirements of the state of Connecticut and the charter of the town of Monroe. It was noted, was presented, this ordinance was presented to the full town council at our last meeting, and by consensus, I called for a public hearing this evening. And notice of this public hearing regarding this ordinance was also published five days prior to today in the Monroe Courier, all in compliance with our town charter. So are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this ordinance? Sure. It's a good thing you're here. People's busy.
Ed Grazer, 194 Barn Hill Road, Monroe. A quick question, maybe Mrs. Heim can help me with this one. There's always been pensions and pension boards going on for NITE. Why separate the post-employment benefits to this kind of a trust? What is the need? Isn't it, if I look at this, I would assume it perhaps has the same representation on the two of them?
If I may, Mr. Bonoski, who's our director of finance, is the individual who has the most knowledge about certain requirements. I don't mean to put you on the spot, Ron, but if you would...
I'm sorry. What was the last part of your question then?
It would seem that this, why separate this type of benefits away from what would be a normal pension board, review board, and the like? And it almost seems they would have the same representation as the other.
Actually, no. This, this just, there's one bargaining unit in the town that basically is falling within the purview of the OPEB.
Okay.
It's just one unit as opposed to a broader spectrum.
These just happen to be the people that represent that.
All right, to answer your question, again, to talk about discussion, Ms. Martin did bring up the same question that you presented. I wasn't sure of your question. I thought you were asking about more specific details that, I mean, I did put Mr. Bonoski on the spot because I didn't recognize, I didn't realize you changed your question a little bit. But Ms. Martin asked the same question that you did, and we did discuss that because the next ordinance we have, we do have a pension committee in town, and the pension committee does oversee, I think that's what you were talking about, the pension committee does oversee a lot of the trusts that have already been established. This is somewhat of a different animal, which is why we decided to not intertwine the two committees. But Ms. Martin did ask that question in the subcommittee, and we did discuss it, and that's the answer we came up with. So thank you with your question.
Thank you.
Any other comment from the public? Any comment from council? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close this public hearing at 6:52 PM. And we have one more to go. Any further questions? You're keeping us busy.
Board of Education is elected. That's correct.
That's correct.
They meet on a different night, often at the school.
It's also on Mondays, I believe, and it's at Massey High School.
And they, they then propose a budget for what they're going to look for, and they have their own pension, is that correct? So they do, they kind of function very similarly to what you guys are doing for the Board of Education?
Being a retired teacher, the teachers, when they have a pension, it's going to state retirement board. It has nothing to do with the town of Monroe whatsoever, because people think that, as though you are still paying, let's say, my pension. No, the town employees are the pension board, pension fund that's coming up. I sit on it, and Mrs. Kansky now sits on it. And of course, they're professional. We use FIA, FIA, I believe? You know, it's a professional, obviously, professional companies, okay? And then we just vote after we listen. We actually had a meeting last week after we listen, and Mr. Bonoski's there and Ms. Nees there, and after we get their opinions, then we vote on whatever comes up. But it's not the teachers'...
Where, where I was really headed is where does the, when the, when the budget comes up, Mr. Vavrick offers, publishes it, he gets lots of input. Uh, maybe I should direct it to the first selectman. Gets lots of input, the Board of Education certainly has a large chunk of this and the, and the public works and the like. And, um, and that all rolls up. And then when it, uh, we vote on it in public, we, we actually go there and vote, uh, yes or no on our budget. If no comes up, what happens next? What's the process for, for the elucidation for the scouts?
Uh, we go to referendum in this town many, sometimes many times, sometimes once, sometimes twice.
The, the reason why is because this is officially council's meeting, so unless I'm approved to talk, I, I'm here to, to like you guys to listen. If they say, Mr. Vavrick, what's your input on that? That's why council spoke up there.
So folks, let me, let me.
We're not in official meeting now, Mr. Vavrick. This is your chance. You have.
Well, she spoke up.
You have six minutes, you have six minutes to, to step on us and speak and answer any question you want. You don't have to be recognized by anyone.
But the interchange here, the meeting is about these individuals here and he's a.
That's true, but I, I follow protocol pretty much, follow protocol. Now, that being said, the Board of Education, all I can do, as a first selectman, any first selectman, is give them an actual dollar amount. The Board of Education votes on their own budget. If I don't like that budget, I can't tell them where to cut or what to do. I can say, take a hundred dollars out. They've gotta take a hundred dollars out. I can say, take two thousand, two million dollars out. They can take out two million dollars. Um, that being said, on the town side, it's a lot different. Once, once that happens, we go back and obviously our referendum. But I, I meet on a constant basis with our superintendent. His last few budgets have been very close to what is needed to educate. We've been trying to, um, co-mingle as many departments as possible between our security, our maintenance, a lot of different things, our technology. We're trying to co-mingle some of those things so we don't duplicate our efforts. I can't do it a lot in every area because of different employment situations. But where we can work together, we work together very well. The same thing happens with council. The budget, I, I ask my department heads for, for their budgets. They put out budgets. Now, they've been very close to where I feel they should be. Um, there is no fat in the budget, but it comes to town council. The town council will let sit there over many, many meetings, and I give these guys credit because, again, they don't get paid for it. They sit there and go over the budget pretty much with a fine-tooth comb. Sometimes I feel they cut out too much. Sometimes they maybe add something in. But it's a good collaborative effort now where we work together with the Board of Finance now. So there's no surprise when it goes to Board of Finance. Those of you who've been here for a long time, remember that the council would take out a bunch of cuts and then the Board of Finance would add them back in. We are not doing that anymore. We're having a lot of co-meetings, very, every, every meeting is public. You know, no matter what, you may read in the paper or hear from your friends, the meetings now are very transparent. Our budget process, if, not even have to speak about it, you just look at previous budgets, how they presented then. Look how they're presented now, especially with our five-year capital plan. You'll be hearing something tonight, how the council's taking it one step forward to actually have a, a strategic plan to, to help us out. Because even though we live it every day, these people hear a lot of things, I have to say that I don't, but it's always good to have checks and balances. So that's why I'm very happy that the council, Board of Finance, and even the Board of Education. Most members of the town council, Board of Education, Board of Finance, um, have come into my office a lot. And especially, you're gonna hear it tonight, I want them to come in a lot more because their voice is heard. Uh, there's a lot of people, I also have to listen to the unaffiliated voter, so voters, they matter also. So all these people we invite in, but like anything else, you're gonna agree to disagree, but what we feel without a budget is pretty much the best budget we possibly can. So getting back to the young gentleman there to see what the most important thing is, a citizen is, is to vote.
Ed, I think it's important for your, uh, your scouts and I'll also that, um, when we, we spend many long nights, um, deliberating, deliberating the budget. However, I think what you're getting to is we are unable, uh, to discuss the Board of Education budget, which makes up the large, largest portion of our budget. It's probably seventy-five percent to twenty-five percent.
Yeah, it's actually a little low.
Um, but we don't discuss that budget in our deliberations. That budget is exclusively discussed by the Board of Education in conjunction with the superintendent, um, and, and his staff. So, uh, it's interesting that we spend many, many, many long nights in discussing the town's budget, which is, uh, significantly less than the education budget. Uh, finance does, does discuss both. They do dig into both and, uh, and do have an opportunity to do that. But when we're discussing, uh, our budget, we're only discussing the town side budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mrs. Lato. You got a question?
Let's say that, uh, does the Board of Education on certain holidays like Columbus Day or any other holidays, do they, did the Board of Education make those rules? That they, that let's say, oh, students will stay home on Columbus Day or that they'll go to school? Is there, or does the schools make those rules?
Uh, the Board of Education actually votes on all the, the entire schedule and the holidays. And I, I don't go to many Board of Education meetings, but I can tell you I was at one where they were discussing at length, I think it was two years ago, whether there's good, there should be school in session on Veterans Day or not. And it was an interesting conversation because I remember when I went to school, we always had Veterans Day off. But I know that my children go to school for the, like, the last two years on Veterans Day, and I was wondering why. And I was at that meeting and they indicated that they thought it was a, the best opportunity to teach the students to appreciate that day. Uh, and, uh, in the past, and I hope they still do this, although I haven't heard it from my children, but they have interaction with veterans in the school. So it's a good opportunity to learn, uh, rather than be at home and maybe play on Xbox or the iPad or outside playing soccer or something like that. So, yes, they do vote on the schedule. If you have input, you should, you should go to a Board of Education meeting and tell them how you feel, right?
I think we're gonna go there, isn't it?
Yes, Ms. Heim.
In the next, I believe, next year or the year after, we, the state is all gonna be on the same schedule. So the, they're trying to get all the schools throughout the state uniformed with their days off, school vacations and everything else. So it'd be like a state plan. Um, I don't think it's this coming year, but I think it's possibly.
So you better, you got two years. You have two years to exert your influence.
If you're curious, snow days are decided by the superintendent. The police department travels the roads at five o'clock in the morning. And then they call the superintendent that they don't think the roads are safe for the, for the buses. So that's why sometimes by the time you get up, if, if your mother doesn't wake you up because there's no, you know, you're not having any school, by ten o'clock, the roads may have been plowed. And you may say, gee, wow, we have the whole day off and there isn't that much snow. But that's all decided by the police department that goes out. There's a special password. They tell the superintendent the pass, the password. So nobody just calls him and says, hey, I'm the police department. And then he puts it on the radio and he has a special password for the radio. So you just cannot call up and say, hey, no school in the road tomorrow. Which I've heard of many a time.
You have such cool, you have such cool facts.
That's a good interpretation of that fact.
All right, seven oh one. You would join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our la, I'm gonna call to order our last, uh, public hearing, uh, at seven oh two PM. The meeting was scheduled for seven, uh, PM, uh, to discuss and receive public input regarding section four oh one A, money purchase pension plan ordinance. And again, the purpose of this meeting is to receive input from the public regarding this proposed ordinance. Uh, it's the intention that this meeting, uh, meet all accessibility requirements for the disabled. So if anybody requires assistance or knows of anybody that does need assistance, please bring it to our attention. Uh, as I indicated with the last ordinance, this is very similar. In fact, if you have the ordinances before you, they're almost identical except for some, uh, the title and some, uh, key definitions within the body. Uh, it's, uh, essentially was required to establish our new money purchase pension plan, which is going to be the, uh, the retirement pension plan for new hires, correct, Mr. Bonowski? Um, and, um, again, pursuant to state statute and our charter and ordinance is required to establish this new pension plan. Uh, unlike the OPEB benefits trust that we discussed before, this will be, uh, overseen as the other pension plans by the pension committee that's already in place. Uh, that's a nine-member committee. It consists of the first selectman, two members of town council, which are currently Ms. Lapalas and Ms. Kansky. Uh, two representatives of the Monroe Board of Finance, two representatives from the Board of Ed, the town treasurer, and the superintendent. For the record, this ordinance was presented to LNA. Uh, it was spearheaded by our finance department, Mr. Bonowski. I wanna thank him for both of those ordinances and, uh, for the channeling this our way. Uh, LNA reviewed this on two separate occasions. Uh, it was presented to, uh, our full-body, uh, town council at our last meeting. And by consensus, I called for a public hearing this evening. Uh, and prior, uh, to this hearing, uh, proper notice, uh, of this hearing and the discussion of this ordinance was published in the Monroe Courier. So with that, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this ordinance? Any members of coun, uh, council wish to comment on this ordinance? Second go around for the public? Anybody? All right, seeing none, gonna close this public hearing at seven oh four PM, seven oh five PM. Uh, and that concludes our public hearing. But before we, uh, break, I think Mr. O'Rourke wanted to address, uh, the audience.
Scott Master, if you wouldn't mind having your Eagle Scout candidates stand up. We'd like to see who they are and recognize them for their efforts.
All live scouts, if you guys will stand up.
All right.
Perhaps as many as ten this coming year.
We have a few minutes. I just wanted to, Ed, if you don't mind, I just wanted to mention personally, um, um, you know, you mentioned volunteerism and, and people ask us, or ask me, why I do this. And I can tell you that, um, having, you know, seeing, uh, participation from your group here is, uh, you know, makes this job rewarding. Uh, I can't tell you how many nights we sit here and, uh, there's two, two people in the audience. Um, you know, we're doing as, as much as we can to, uh, all of our meetings are now tape-recorded. Um, you can go on to the monroe ct dot org. Uh, it's kind of a YouTube presentation, so they're taped recorded. They're not live on, on charter. But, uh, anybody can see, uh, what we do. We were kind of the, the one body that was in the dark. And as I said before, we think we're the most important body, but, uh, no one ever saw what we did unless you came here. Uh, the lack of media presence, uh, these days in the last couple of years has been discouraging. Uh, so we really don't get, uh, opportunity to, um, to tell the general public, especially, you know, those in town, uh, what we do, what we're trying to do. And we encourage input. I, I've said it over and over and over again. If anybody ever has an idea, suggestion, comments, um, you know, that's what we're here for. We're here for you. We're here to, uh, try to make this town the best it possibly can be for, uh, for you. I, I personally grew up in Monroe. I graduated from, I went to Font Hollow. I went to Chalk Hill. I graduated from Massick. And I, uh, moved back into town and I have three children back in the public school system. So, uh, you know, it's, it's a pleasure for me to, to continue to move this town forward. I know I share the sentiment of all the members of, of council and the first selectmen that, uh, we know, that's, that's our, that's our goal. So I wanna encourage you, uh, you guys, any of you, to, uh, to come anytime you wish. Uh, although we run late sometimes, it may be a good excuse for you to get a later bedtime. But, uh, uh, you know, um, I, I just wanna thank you for coming and it's, it's, it's definitely encouraging. The, the interaction, the back and forth is, is something that, uh, will keep us, keep us going.
And I would just like to say that my, my, bragging, my two sons were Eagle Scouts. And I encourage that if you ever need me help with a science project or something, you know about, Mr. Gray, knows my last name. One went to West Point, was an officer, et cetera, et cetera. You cannot imagine how being an Eagle Scout has helped. So, you know, just keep it up. The other one went to UConn and has his own business, et cetera. And it's, it's total bragging, but they both were Eagle Scouts. And you should continue and do, even though it took work, et cetera, et cetera, you should definitely do it. One did the bridge on, in Great Huddle, there's a small bridge there, and one ran a blood drive. And that, when I ran another student council, it's very easy to set you up with a blood drive. So, um, there are of course unique people to, to do it, but I'm just saying, I would be happy to help anytime you'd like me to.
Anybody else wish to say anything? I don't wanna.
I'll, I'll just.
It's a bragging, bragging opportunity, I guess.
Echo, echo your current remarks. And again, thank you, Mr. Gratrix, for bringing, uh, Troop Sixty-three here and scouts for coming out tonight. We really appreciate your, your participation and, uh, work hard on those badges.
I would just add, I have, I have scuffed back there that were my students. I would like to add that Mr. Lato was my student.
That hasn't been verified.
It showed up the class.
Anybody else? All right, so that's gonna conclude this, uh, this portion.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks again. So we have, uh, twenty minutes until our official swearing-in, so we can, I'm gonna turn the recorder off.